delineation reports and soil survey, we also have a sewer capacity letter, a copy of the subdivision name approval letter from the county, a copy of a response received from Delaware Department of Transportation, we have a letter received from Fish and Wildlife Service, we have a copy of the applicant's environmental assessment and public facility evaluation report. I will also note we have the applicant's Phase One archaeological investigation. We also have copies of the tac comments, including Division of Watershed Stewardship and Sussex County Engineering. We have a copy of a letter received from the Delaware State Fire Marshal and a copy of a letter received from the Departments of Agriculture. We also have a letter received from the Sussex County Engineering Department, Utilities Planning Division, and the staff review letter. I would note that in total, Mr. Chairman, we received eight letters, all of which appear to be in opposition, although I would note we subsequently received another letter, which I've circulated on your desk, retracting one of those letters, so there are seven written responses received. And I would like to thank colleagues in Delaware Department of Transportation, as we have Mr. Steve Bayer from DelDOT joining us this evening if you have questions.
Okay, thank you very much. You know, that's interesting. If I had a quarter for every retraction there was, I think I'd have a quarter. The chair recognizes Mr. Fuqua.
For the record, my name is Jim Fuqua. I'm the attorney that's representing the applicant, Glenwood Lewis LLC. As Mr. Whitehouse stated, there was an exhibit book that was submitted that contains relevant information about the application. With me are Ben Gordy on behalf of the applicant, Zach Crouch from Davis Bellman for Dell, Ted Linay from Environmental Resources, Inc., and Head Otter of Head Otter, Inc. Just so you know, I'm going to be making our presentation, and then all of us will be available for any questions you may have. I do have a lot of material to cover with you. I'll try to go over it as quickly and clearly as possible, and then again, if you have any detailed questions, we can refer to our consultants. This is an application for an AR-1 cluster subdivision to be called Black Oak. The land proposed to be subdivided contains seventy-seven point two-three acres. It's located on the north side of New Road, west of the city of Lewis. And Jamie, could you put up just the aerial map for a second?
Yep.
As you can see, the parcel, which is outlined in yellow, it actually has frontage on New Road at two locations on its south boundary. The remainder of the southern boundary of the parcel, as you can see, is adjacent to the rear of ten single-family lots. Those lots were subdivided from this property by the prior owner, Mr. Knapp, back in nineteen ninety-six, and those lots are existing lots, they have been existing lots, they're not part of the proposed subdivision. To the north and the west, I'm sorry, to the northwest and the northeast portions of the site, the border of Black Oak, Black Hog Gut and Pretimen Branch. To the right or east, the property is adjacent to the Ashburn subdivision. To the east of Ashburn is the Tower Hill development, which I'm sure the commissioner will remember as the Grim Church property. The Tower Hill subdivision was approved in two thousand and eighteen. The Nassau Station and Sandown Village subdivisions are located across New Road from our site, and there's four large undeveloped lots fronting on New Road that are located to the west of the site along the front portion of the property. The property is zoned AR-1. Single-family dwellings with individual lots are permitted use in the AR-1 zoning district. The AR-1 district also permits cluster design subdivisions with a minimum lot size of seventy-five-hundred square feet at a density of two lots per acre, provided that central water is utilized and subject to the cluster design requirements of the zoning ordinance. Under the two thousand and nineteen Sussex County Comprehensive Plan, the site is located in a low-density area. The plan recognizes that in a low-density area, single-family development at a density of two lots per acre is appropriate, and the plan encourages the use of the cluster design provisions of the ordinance. Under the state strategies investment map, the site is located in investment levels two, three, and four. And Jamie, you have, I think Zach has sent in some exhibits, you have the state investment map of...
There you go.
In any event, the proposed development itself is concentrated in the areas of the site that are designated as levels two and three. Basically, the level four areas are the areas that are along Black Oak Gut and Pretimen Branch. So the development will be in levels two and three, and the strategies document identifies investment levels two and three as areas where growth is anticipated by state and county plans, and where in-state investments will support growth. The proposed Black Oak subdivision will contain one hundred and twenty-seven single-family lots and recreational amenities. The original application was for one hundred and thirty-one lots, but it has been reduced to one hundred and twenty-seven with some modifications to the site design, which I'll be referring to in a minute. The seventy-seven point two-three acres contain eleven point zero-zero-eight acres of state-regulated tidal wetlands. Deducting the tidal wetlands from the total acreage results in a developable area of sixty-six point one-nine-two acres. Under the AR cluster regulations, two lots per acre are permitted, and that would permit one hundred and thirty-two lots. So the one hundred and twenty-seven lots that are being proposed are within the density permitted in this parcel.
Mr. Fuqua, was that sixty-six point one-nine-two? I just want to make sure I have that number in. Was the net?
Sixty-six point one-nine-two, yes.
Oh, thanks. Just took my notes right. Thanks.
As to the specifics of the proposed development, central water for domestic use and fire protection will be provided by Tide Water Utilities, Inc. Tide Water holds a certificate of public convenience and necessity to serve this area. Central sewer will be provided as part of the Sussex County Unified Sewer District. The development will be served by a gravity sewer connecting to an existing regional pump station, which is actually located on the land adjacent to the site, and the county engineering department has indicated that wastewater capacity is available for the proposed development. Stormwater management facilities will be designed and constructed in accordance with then our current sediment and stormwater regulations, and reviewed and approved by the Sussex Conservation District. There was a subsurface soil exploration report that was performed by Geotechnology Associates that was done to determine the appropriate locations for the stormwater management ponds. A wetland delineation was performed by Environmental Resources, Inc. That delineation determined that the site contained seven point nine-two-one acres of federal jurisdictional non-tidal wetlands and eleven point zero-zero-eight acres of state-regulated tidal wetlands. The wetlands... Jamie, could you go back to the site plan? Thank you. The wetlands are located basically along the northwestern and northeastern boundaries of the parcel, adjacent to Black Hog Gut and Pretimen Branch. A wetland determination was reviewed by the Army Corps of Engineers Philadelphia District Office, and a preliminary jurisdictional determination letter was issued by that office on June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, a copy of which is in the record. As to buffers, there will be a landscaped buffer that is thirty feet wide, adjacent to lands of other ownership, and that's basically located on the front east and west sides of the property, adjacent to Ashburn and adjacent to the lot to our west, and also the buffer would be along the rear of the existing lots on, the ten existing lots on New Road. As to wetland buffers, as the commission knows, the county council recently adopted a new resource buffer ordinance that will require a hundred-foot buffer from tidal wetlands and a thirty-foot buffer from federally regulated non-tidal wetlands. This application for Black Oak was filed with the county in September of two thousand and twenty-one, prior to the adoption of that buffer ordinance, and under the provisions of that ordinance, its terms are not applicable to this application. The legal requirements that do apply to this application require a fifty-foot buffer from tidal wetlands, and under the provisions of the cluster development, a twenty-five-foot permanent setback from the boundary of non-tidal wetlands. Now, with that being said, in planning of the original site design of this development, Mr. Crouch basically followed the guidance of the cluster ordinance, that homes should be clustered on the environmentally suitable portions of the site that were least encumbered by environmental features such as wetlands and mature woodlands. That's the language read from the ordinance. Now, that resulted in an original site plan that did provide a significant buffer from the tidal wetlands and the non-tidal wetlands. This site also contained woodlands, and a portion of the woodlands were considered to be mature forest. Now, all of the woodlands that would be located within the wetland buffers will be preserved. Obviously, that's in the preservation area, they're not going to be touched. However, some of the mature trees appear to be outside of the buffer area within the proposed lots or along lot lines. To determine where these mature trees were, a tree survey was actually done to identify healthy, mature trees that, as I said, were located within what looked like to be the lot lines or in close proximity to them. The survey identified mature trees as trees with a circumference of five feet or greater, measured at chest height, and a copy of the tree survey is in the record. Now, once that tree survey was done, and based on that information, the original site plan, which is the one that I think was in the Cape Gazette and that went to Plus, that was the one with the one hundred and thirty-one lots, that plan was modified by basically moving the lots on the left side, there's some of the lots on the left side there, moving them toward the center of the development, so sliding them in closer and rearranging them. So in effect, the buffer area was actually increased, and that resulted in a majority of the impacted mature trees being in the buffer area where they will be preserved. So basically, what the original plan, it kind of went like that, so this area here was in lot areas. So the revised plan moved those lots over, replaced a good deal of the mature trees, as I said, into the buffer area. Now, as a result of the design of the development as presented tonight, it will provide a minimum buffer between any non-tidal wetland and any buildable area of fifty-five feet, and a minimum buffer between any tidal wetland and any buildable area of one hundred and ninety feet. Now, those are the minimum, or shortest buffer distances. The actual average buffer between any buildable area and any non-tidal wetland is one hundred and thirty feet, and the average from tidal wetlands is two hundred and sixty-one feet. So in summary, not only do the proposed buffers for the proposed development exceed the required buffers, they also significantly exceed the buffers required by the new resource buffer ordinance. So these are very large buffers that have been provided. The buffers will be protected and preserved by provisions in the community's restrictive covenants, and also by providing a conservation easement on all of the lands within the buffer areas, which again will protect the buffers, and there will be provisions providing penalties for violations of the restrictions or violations of the easements. There will also be a tree preservation restriction covenant that will protect certain identified mature trees, and these are trees that are on some of the lots just to the right of the red line that I drew there. These are mature trees that are in a setback area or perhaps right along a lot line, and there'll be a restriction that as long as they are mature and healthy, they cannot be removed either. And again, there will be individual restrictions on those lots, and again, the restriction will provide penalties for violations. The entire development itself, the open space, as an open space is defined in the zoning ordinance, and including the resource area buffer, will total forty-two acres, and that is approximately fifty-four percent of the seventy-seven acre site. As designated on the FEMA insurance maps, and again, Jamie, that's one of the exhibits that we submitted. Other... Yeah. How do you erase that? As designated on the FEMA insurance maps, portions of the site are located in the area identified as AE, which is the area that's within the hundred-year floodplain. Basically, those areas are made up of Black Hog Gut, Pretimen Branch, and the adjacent wetlands. All of those areas are within the resource buffer area, which will remain undisturbed. All of the lots, as you can see from the map, will be located outside of the AE area in the flood hazard area that's marked as FEMA Zone X, which is the area not affected by the floodplain. You can go back to the site plan. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service indicated that the proposed development will have no effect on endangered or threatened or candidate species. As to traffic, DelDOT determined that based on the development's anticipated trip generation, and in accordance with DelDOT's Development Coordination Manual, the developer could pay an area-wide study fee in lieu of a traffic impact study. The development entrance will be designed and constructed in accordance with DelDOT's requirements, and the applicant will also be responsible for funding an equitable portion as determined by DelDOT of improvements planned as part of the DelDOT SR-1 Minus Conaway Intersection Project, primarily our contribution would be related to the proposed improvements at Old Orchard Road and the New Road intersection, which is just down New Road from this site. And lastly, and I need to just take a little bit of time to explain this, as the commission knows, DelDOT has a standard requirement that normally requires an applicant to dedicate additional road right-of-way, and to dedicate a fifteen-foot easement along the right-of-way, and often to construct a ten-foot-wide shared-use path with a five-foot setback from the right-of-way. Almost on every subdivision I've done, that's been a provision. And normally, as you know, the applicant owns the road frontage, but as I mentioned here, in this situation, this subdivision has limited road frontage just at the two locations with the cul-de-sac shown on the right and where the entrance is shown on the left. The rest of the road frontage is actually adjacent to the ten single-family lots that are the existing lots that are not part of this application. So with that understanding, the applicant has agreed, and I do have this as condition R of the proposed conditions that I will be submitting to you, the applicant has agreed to construct a shared-use path on its property as well as on the ten existing lots. Now, that would be within the right-of-way that exists there. We can't dedicate the right-of-way because they're not our lots. So the applicant is going to be responsible for constructing the shared-use path. Now, the construction of that path would be subject to approval from DelDOT of probable design modifications from the standard shared-use path that may be necessitated because of the existing right-of-way limitations on those lots. So it may not be exactly like the shared-use paths you see everywhere, and I think everyone agreed that a shared-use path with modified design running along New Road from the east boundary of the property to the west boundary of the property is better than no shared-use path at all, and I think that's pretty obvious, and again, eventually, hopefully, it will be a shared-use path all the way down New Road. Also, as you know, this application was reviewed as part of the Plus process. One of the Plus comments was from the State Historic Preservation Office, SHPO Office, and that office recommended a Phase One archaeological survey or any ground disturbance due to the potential of prehistoric and historic resources that exist or may exist, that may exist on the property. And I do want to point out that this is only a recommendation, it is not a requirement. In fact, unless a cemetery or unmarked human remains are discovered or known or believed to exist on the site, there are no federal, state, or county laws or regulations requiring any type of archaeological study or inspections. However, again, the applicant recognized that this parcel had a unique and special history, some of which you're well aware of from the Grim Church application. This parcel was part of a larger original land patent that was granted by the Duke of York in sixteen seventy-six. It contained about four hundred and seventy-five acres, and it was called the Tower Hill Patent. And the history of the Tower Hill Patent was extensively researched and documented in a book written by Ralph Pretiman. Mr. Pretiman's ancestors owned portions of the Tower Hill Patent lands, including our parcel from sixteen ninety-seven to seventeen seventy, and a larger parcel from sixteen ninety-seven to nineteen twenty-six. The commission members, with the exception of Mr. Mears, who wasn't on the commission yet, will recall that the larger parcel was the Grim Church parcel. And as I said, that was approved as a cluster subdivision in two thousand and eighteen, and is now called Tower Hill. As part of the planning for that development, for the Grim Church property development, that applicant retained Ed Otter to perform a Phase One archaeological study, and based on the findings of that study on the Grim Church site, further investigation was done, which resulted in the creation of conservation easements, easement areas for the perpetual protection of what was discovered there as significant archaeological resources that related to not only Native American occupation, but also to historic resources that were related to the Pretiman family, actually, including an old family cemetery. Now, based on that background information on our application, the applicant determined that it was appropriate to also study this site, and the applicant also retained Ed Otter to perform a Phase One archaeological study, since he was obviously very familiar with the area and with the Tower Hill Patent. The study that Mr. Otter did involved archaeologically-related research of records, an actual field survey of the plowed fields, and shovel tests in the wooded areas of the site. The conclusions from the study found evidence of pre-contact occupation of the site by Native Americans, and what was found included artifacts such as flakes and pottery fragments. The summary of the report states, however, that unlike the major prehistoric sites found on the Grim Church property, these pre-contact sites on our property were small and contained a few artifacts. Mr. Otter's study also found that there were historical European-American use of this site as farmland with two periods of actual occupation. One was in the second half of the eighteenth century, and the other one was in the early twentieth century. The study found that Site Eight was believed to be the site of the Thomas Gray House. Thomas Gray was believed to have lived on this land at that site from seventeen seventy to seventeen eighty-three. The site itself was not rich in domestic artifacts, but Mr. Otter stated that few sites of this age have been examined in Sussex County, and that additional study of Site Eight could provide new information about life during the eighteenth century in Sussex County. And as a result of that, the applicant has authorized Mr. Otter to perform additional work on Site Eight. It's my understanding that that work will begin after Crouch has been removed later in the fall. A copy of the Phase One Archaeological Investigation Report has been submitted for the record, and I was going to propose that upon completion of the Site Eight investigation, a copy of the Site Eight investigation and the Phase One report would be provided to the State Historic Preservation Office, to Ralph Pretiman, to Sussex County, to the Lewis Historical Society, and to the Nanook Indian Museum. They were the parties that it was agreed would be provided with the Grim Church archaeological studies, so I thought it'd be appropriate, since it's of the same patent, to provide them the same information. And then lastly, the site is located in the Cape and Lippin School District. As you probably know, the elementary, middle schools, as well as the Cape and Lippin High School are located nearby the site, and fire protection will be provided by the Lewis Volunteer Fire Company. As to the site design of the subdivision, as I said, Black Oak will have one hundred and twenty-seven single-family lots, which is slightly less than the permitted AR-1 cluster density. The lots vary in size from seven thousand five hundred and three square feet to fifteen thousand three hundred and seventy-three square feet. The average lot size is approximately nine thousand four hundred and thirty-seven square feet. The development will have one entrance from New Road that's located on the west of the side of the property. The entrance, again, will be designed and constructed in compliance with DelDOT requirements. On the eastern side of the property, fronting on New Road, will be a community park with parking spaces provided. There will be a school bus stop, which we anticipate will be located at this location in front of the park. The exact location and design of the school bus stop, of course, will be coordinated with the school district. And I can't quite see it on the scale, but there will also be an emergency access from New Road to the internal street system. In effect, that cul-de-sac you see there, there'll be an emergency access to that cul-de-sac. So that'll be, again, only for emergency access in the event it is needed. The subdivision streets will be private. They will be built to Sussex County Engineering Department standards. There will be sidewalks on both sides of the streets with non-intrusive street lighting. The community recreational area is located in the center rear of the site. Jamie, if you can just slide back there a little bit. So it's located to the rear of the site in the center. It will contain a clubhouse. It's not designed yet, but it'll be a minimum floor area of twenty-eight hundred square feet. There'll be an outdoor swimming pool and deck, a tot lot, two pickleball courts, an outdoor fireplace, a grilling area, and a parking lot. It's proposed that the amenities would be completed and open for use prior to the issuance of the sixty-fifth residential building permit. In addition, there's an existing kayak launching area that's located to the north of the recreational area, where uplands are actually adjacent to Black Oak Creek, and it's proposed that that kayak launching area would remain used as a kayak launching area. It would be limited to kayaks and the stand-up paddle boards for use by the residents of the development. And then lastly, as I already mentioned, there is a community park at the front east corner of the site where the emergency access will be located. The lots are as laid out, as shown on the site plan. There are four main stormwater collection areas. Two of them will appear as large centrally-located ponds, which will provide an attractive feature to the community. It's anticipated that the development would be constructed in approximately three phases. The community will have a homeowners association, which will be comprised of all lot owners. The community will have a homeowners' association, which will be comprised of all lot owners. The association will be responsible for enforcing the restrictions, collecting assessments, and maintaining the development streets, entrances, buffers, landscaping, stormwater facilities, recreational amenities, and the remainder of the community common areas. There will also be a restrictive covenant prohibiting the application of fertilizers, chemicals, or similar soil additives on lots or common areas by homeowners. All such applications will be administered by the homeowners' association, using best management practices, and in consultation with a Delaware licensed environmental consultant. And that restriction is also in the proposed conditions I'll be submitting to you as condition Q. And I also do want to mention because I know Mrs. Stevenson brings it up frequently, that the applicant, the applicant's going to be selling finished lots to builders. And the applicant has agreed to voluntarily donate a half of the percentage point of the gross lot selling price at settlement to the Sussex County Land Trust because we do recognize the good work and what the Land Trust is trying to accomplish and we're encouraging all builders and developers to contribute this, but it's voluntary. I will submit for your review proposed findings and conditions. And in closing, I believe that the proposed Black Oak subdivision, as I said, is an AR-1 cluster subdivision, which is a permitted use in the AR-1 zoning district and is specifically authorized by the Sussex County 2019 Comprehensive Plan. I think you can see that Black Oak was designed in accordance with the purpose and goals of the cluster option by clustering lots outside of the environmentally sensitive areas of the site, providing extensive wetland and forest resource buffers and significant active and passive open space that exceed the cluster development design requirements and provisions of the zoning ordinance. And with that, that will conclude our presentation. Other than any questions you may have for any others. Thank you.
Our answer, we thank you. We'll see if there's anyone on the commission that has any questions for you and we'll start with Ms. Holly Stevenson.
I just have a question for Mr. Otter. Since you'd offered very nicely to let him do more study on the property, what does that usually entail?
So this would be the Site Eight study?
Yeah.
Please.
Dr. Edward Otter, Principal of Edward Otter Incorporated Cultural Resources Firm based in Salisbury, Maryland. The investigation will be to understand what's left of the Thomas Gray House site and what we can learn about Thomas Gray himself. As it stands, all we know is that he was a middle income farmer. He bought the land in 1770, took a mortgage two years later, and when he died, he still owed money on it. So we don't know anything about him and archaeology is the only way we could ever learn more people like that. So we will, actually, the plan is first to get a ground penetrating radar to see if we can identify what we call cultural features. This might be well or cellar hole or actually the posts that probably were used to build the house. That will allow us to target those with excavations so we can see how big the house was, what material the man was using, if there's any frontal preservation, what kind of foods he was eating, things like that. And it's most likely going to be stage so if everything's tore up because if you look at the 1937 aerial photograph, the entire area was an orchard. So it could be they dug holes everywhere, planted trees, the roots tore it all up, and there's really nothing we can learn. But at this point, we don't know how much we can learn. So we'll get in there, we'll start working at it, see what's left, and if we find anything that we will analyze that to understand more about lots of those people.
And as I understand it, what makes us unique is it just hasn't been much worked on on sites of this age?
No, a lot of sites like this, and I've found many of them, we find them and then we move on. They either get built over because someone moved a wetland permit or they get cut off. The RNL, I did one on RNL Creek, we found one and then they left it, just sitting there in two acres of land, never looked at. So we really have no understanding of life at that period because there has been very little work. With the state having no archaeological requirements, we just don't get a lot of opportunities down here.
So you'll be allowed to figure this all out? You'll be given time and space to do that?
That's my understanding. We still have some details to work out as to how we arrange it all, but yeah.
Never got to punch it yet? I'm sorry, that's just my way of reacting.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you. All right, in the shared use path, you said it's just going to be on New Road in the area where they touch New Road?
With Del Dots, the claim as far as design, it's going to run from our western boundary to our eastern boundary. I will mention, the applicant has offered the Del Dot to make a contribution to Del Dot for part of the construction, of the remaining construction of a shared use pit, I'm forgetting the word, a shared use pit between our eastern boundary and Tower Hill. Because that's kind of a gap.
Right.
Because that's already developed there. So that's going to have to be a Del Dot project to put that in. But hopefully, from Tower Hill down to, what's the word, the World Grays?
I know what you're talking about.
Hopefully it will be a shared use.
Oh, way to there, yeah, exactly.
Which would be great for the development because you actually can connect to the bike trail right at the World Grays.
Exactly. Okay, those are the questions I had for now, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hopkins?
So on the trees, you talked about the size and all that, but the existing tree line, how much of that do you anticipate removing?
Are the existing trees on the site?
Yeah, the tree line that's, what would that be, the north, the north end of the property?
I believe the existing trees are 29.8 acres. The trees that will remain or be reforested, was it one of these new tree plans done, will total 14.5 acres. Of the old growth forest, there's existing 13.6 acres and approximately two acres will be removed.
What were those numbers again on the old growth?
Does that sound right to you?
It was?
The data from the site plan.
Yeah, was it on the site plan?
Yeah, but the existing is 29.8. The remaining and the reforested will be 14.5 after development. The old growth, the existing was 13.6 and approximately two acres are being removed, so 11 acres will remain. And I do want to mention that, you know, under the, under the Cluster Ordinance Guidelines, you know, it does state that you're trying to cluster your development on the environmentally, the least environmentally encumbered lands, trying to avoid waterways and mature woodlands. But that same section specifically states, this does not inhibit the development of wooded parcels. That's really in the ordinance. And also in the ordinance, it states that the removal of healthy mature trees shall be limited. It's not prohibited, it's limited. And I think you can see, at least, although I've been involved, and I've never been involved in a tree survey before, and a real effort was made here to identify mature forests and to preserve it by moving the lot lines to put those mature trees into the preservation area, as well as putting individual restrictions on lots to preserve additional mature trees.
So Mr. Crouch is putting that, what's that, is that related to trees or?
For the record, Zach Crouch, David Smokey, yes, that's the tree survey that we did and then found all the trees and actually, it's in your exhibits. And if you went to Exhibit Four in your booklet, it actually shows the original plan that we submitted. And then the plan that's in front of you today is showing, you know, how much we adjusted the plan to try to save as much old growth as possible. There was, you know, a good amount.
And this is the same thing I did before, but it wasn't on the tree survey. So if the original plan, and I don't need the exact year, but the original plan, these numbers in the book, down here, these lots came like up this way. So you can see this, what I was saying, all of these trees in here were on lots that very likely would have been removed. So those lots were moved in this direction to put all those trees into the preservation.
And did y'all have anything else on that, Zach? Were you all done on that?
Yes.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions right now, thank you.
All right. Ms. Hungy?
Maybe I missed this when you were doing your presentation, Mr. Fuquay. Is there an existing tree line from the 10 properties that are along New Road? Or were you planning to put a fence or anything there?
Along New Road?
Yes.
Yeah, to the rear of those lots, the three-quarter acre lots. To the rear of those lots, we will have that 30-foot landscape off of it, that's required by the ordinance. So that'll be along Ashburn, it'll be along the lots to our west, and it'll be along the rear of the 10 existing lots.
Okay. That's all I have for now, thank you.
Mears?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, staff, anyone?
Don't bother me, thank you.
None for me at this point, thanks.
All right, Mr. Fuquay, you take a seat nearby, we'll see if anyone here has an interest in your application. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of subdivision 2021-31, Lenwood, now known as Black Oak? Anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to subdivision 2021-31? Okay, we'll start over here with you, ma'am. Come up and give us your name and you may have the floor.
Are you able to bring up a page of the online report or I also have it here?
It might be faster if we use yours, so.
Good evening, my name is Jill Hicks. My husband and I reside at 37 Amtry Drive, Chapel Green, Lewis. And my husband's family has owned property in Lewis Beach since 1963. We have a lot at stake here when it comes to property rights, citizen rights, and the degradation of the quality of life and the environment, both of which go hand in hand, particularly in Sussex County. As reported by Delaware Online on March 25, 2022, Delaware is the worst state in the nation for water quality. The Environmental Integrity Project states that 97% of Delaware's rivers and streams are too polluted for water, recreation, and aquatic life. Of the 4,470 total miles of rivers and streams in the state, an estimated 1,900 miles, nearly half are too impaired for any type of use. According to the EPA, most impairment in the state water comes from polluted runoff from farms, suburban and urban areas. Regarding this site, I commend the developer and its partners for coming up with a design that stays off and away from the wetlands. And also I admire the work that they did on the trees and the tree survey. But the wetlands are all jurisdictional, so there's no argument there. However, let's see, did you get the slide up?
I'm trying to load it, but I believe your USB port drive does not go into the USB port on our computer.
Do you have a Mac by chance? I have a...
What we may have to do is load it from the packet.
It's page 259 of the online packet is what I'm looking for. Thank you. Thank you. Regarding this, I commend, as I said, I commend the design work that they did. However, there is a large area in the southwest corner of the site that is determined by the state to be, and it's titled Excellent Recharge, Groundwater Recharge Area. An area is determined to be an excellent recharge area when, quote, "any area where soils and sedimentary deposits of the most coarse-grained nature have the best ability to transmit water vertically through the unsaturated zone to the water table," end quote. This constitutes a critical area as defined under the Delaware Code, Chapter 92, Title 29. Sussex County Code 89-7, titled Excellent Recharge Area, states, and I quote, "One, the requirements of this chapter do not impose any additional limitations upon land development, provided the impervious cover of any portion of the tax parcel located within," not the whole parcel, "but within the excellent groundwater recharge area is 35% or less. Two, impervious cover of that portion of a tax parcel within the excellent groundwater recharge area, which is greater than 35%, but no more than 60% is allowed, provided the applicant demonstrates through an environmental assessment report prepared by a registered professional geologist or registered professional engineer familiar with the hydrogeologic characteristics of Sussex County and using a climatic water budget that will ensure that post-development," this is important, "post-development recharge quantity will not meet or exceed," will meet, I should say, will meet or exceed the existing pre-development recharge quantity. So if you zoom in on this slide, you can see that in red, that southwest portion that is part of the excellent groundwater recharge area. I don't believe the recharge area was addressed by the developer. My concerns are with the impact these proposed impervious services will have to the Broadkill watershed. This excellent recharge area must not be negatively impacted. It is important that the quantity of water continue to move through this zone. Therefore, I recommend, as a taxpayer and concerned citizen, number one, the amount of impervious surface proposed within that excellent recharge area be calculated and presented to the P&amp;Z staff and commissioners. Two, that if this amount of impervious surface can be legally added according to the code, to the excellent groundwater recharge zone, if those impervious surfaces can be legally encoded, according to code, be added to that zone, that it be made clear to homeowners and the HOA that no additional impervious surfaces such as, but not limited to, sheds, porches, sidewalks, and hardscapes can be added without the recalculated addition of impervious surfaces to the total excellent groundwater recharge area and its impact. So I would just like that study included and let's know what the impact would be to that groundwater area. This has to do with the importance of runoff and the groundwater and the watershed table. And thank you very much.
Okay, we thank you.
If I want to have this for you?
Great. Okay, anyone else? Yes, ma'am, all the way in the back.
Good evening, I'm Janet Ledigabel, I live on Roundpole Bridge Road in Milton. I'm glad there was so much talk about the presenter about preserving trees, but what the gentleman failed to mention was, when you remove old growth forest, the trees that are left become vulnerable, their roots become vulnerable. And you can ask your county engineer, because that's how I got this information from. So we've seen this with Arbor Lynn. When you remove the outer trees, the inner tree roots aren't used to the elements and they die. So it's nice that they say that they're preserving forest, but by taking out that line, which would encompass 19 lots, it's doing damage to all of the mature forest. So I would ask that all of the mature forests be preserved. So I would ask that all of the mature forests be preserved. It would be eliminating 19 lots, and you can check with your engineer on the, how this works when you remove old-growth forest. Next, I know your staff doesn't have time to review all plus reports, but Dr. Otter's report was amazing. He found so many artifacts, and it was very interesting. And I ask that the commission preserve the three areas where the artifacts were found, because this is our history, this is historical site. And if we plow it over with concrete and basements, we lose that. So I ask the commission to possibly consider preserving those three large areas where Dr. Otter found his artifacts. And then lastly, I have a, just a two-slide presentation, I have a thumb drive, of what happens when you disturb the habitat all along New Road. The wildlife doesn't have anywhere to go. It's going to be black. Do I have a pointer here?
I can load it, and just to assist, Mr. Chairman, we'll have to retain the flash drive to get a copy of the presentation.
Okay, yeah. It's only two slides, a title and a visual. Go back to D, Mr. Whitehouse, at its Black Oak Glenwood. There you go. And then the next slide is just what happens when you remove all of the forest and the wildlife doesn't have anywhere to go. Savannah Road, a fawn, a week ago. That's all. I'm sorry it was disturbing. That's what's happening. All of the wildlife from New Road are going to Savannah, and they're getting hit, and that's a fawn. Okay, thank you. Thank you all. Thank you all for your service and your dedication and your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir, all the way in the back, in the dark shirt.
It's my first time.
Okay, well, just what I gotta do is give us your name, and you may have the floor.
All right. My name's Hank Faust. I'm from Lewis, but I live in the county.
Okay.
And my family's been here a pretty long time. So I don't know how this is gonna go, following up those two presentations, which were certainly a lot more organized and prepared than mine, but I read over the report, the one that's on the screen, the 369-page one.
Right.
And I just, I found a number of discrepancies, and like, just like, questions that I had, and like, just overall concerns. So where do I start? Let me see here. I guess I'll start with the archaeological dig. I noticed that there was a section where it said no projectiles were found on the historic sites. However, if you figure 12, what's the first item in Figure 12? I would think that that is an arrowhead. And so I wasn't sure if that would make a case for, like, doing more digs in order to search for Native American artifacts and remains. I guess, is there a way that you could show it to the people? And I mean, I could be wrong, but it just looked like one to me.
We can ask.
Was it historical?
It said no projectiles were found in one of the sections, and I have a screenshot of it. I just, I don't know anything about this process, it's just like things I've noted.
You ask your questions, we'll bring them down, and then we'll try to get answers for you.
All right, thank you. I guess while he's searching through that, I, another thing that I noted was, um, let's search through my packet here. There was, uh, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service report noted that there was, would have no effect on endangered, threatened, or candidate species, and IPAC species list, which I didn't know what that was. But they said, "If additional information on distribution of listed or proposed species become available, this determination may be reconsidered." And so I actually live on connecting, the connecting watershed on land that, there's wetlands behind my house that are connected directly to the wetlands that are behind this property. And I've taken notes, and I have pictures of several, like, species of threatened and endangered frogs, that I was kind of concerned about, that they didn't note that, or like, look at anything on the property. I believe it's a species of Korean tree frog, which is considered threatened in Delaware, and also a species of barkin' tree frog, which is considered endangered in Delaware. So I didn't, like, four pictures, I have more, but I spend a lot of time outside, you know, these are just things I see. Additionally, oh, so yes, there's the picture I was referring to. If you look at that first item there, I mean, I think that looks like an arrowhead. I don't know about anyone else, but...
The one on the right?
The one on the left.
On the left, okay.
Yeah, the far left, the very first one. But...
We'll check with our...
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure it's not gonna matter, but I just wanted to bring it up.
We appreciate you being so thorough. Go ahead.
So, to continue, there were some other things. So about the trees, like many people, like, who live in Lewis and the surrounding area, we've seen a lot of these communities go up, trees get torn down. The adjacent development on New Road, I guess Tower Hill, there's a lot more trees being torn down, and I think people anticipated or realized. And so I was just kind of confused on exactly how many trees were proposed to be torn down in this, for this development. And I actually went on Google Earth, and I, like, mapped the outline of the property that does not have trees on it. And let me find that for you. I took a screenshot and added it to this. Yeah, and so, I mean, I can bring up and show you guys, but I, basically, I mapped the very outline of the field. And in the field, there, if they were to build solely in the field with no encroaching onto the trees or anything like that, it would be 28 acres. And so, out of 28.2 acres, to be exact. And so I believe the property itself was 77 acres, 77.3 or 4 maybe? Of which, the gentleman earlier said that there would be, um, one second. I believe he said 66 point, there were 11.08 acres of wetlands, so that left a total of 66.19 acres of, I guess, buildable land. And they mentioned that there are 29.8 acres of trees, and then after, and 13.6 acres of old forest. I don't know if that counts, if those are together, if those are separate items. But then 14.8 acres would be remaining, and that includes reforested trees, which, like, I was kind of curious how much it would include without those reforested trees, because that just basically means trees that they're planting inside the property limits. And I mean, all in all, if, when I mapped the land, for the 131 houses, which I guess was reduced to 127, and they said, originally in the report, on the tree report, they said they were planning on clearing four acres of woodlands. And the gentleman earlier said they're clearing two acres of old forest, plus 14, or I guess 15.4 acres of trees in general. So I mean, it's a lot of trees. And I, I don't know very much about this, but it just seemed like a lot to me, and I think that it should be considered, and like, these trees should be protected. The lady earlier mentioned about how when you cut one tree down, for old growth, old forest, it actually impacts the health of the other trees. That is, I've heard that before as well, and I mean, I think that's something that should definitely be considered. And, yeah, I think, those are like my two, or I guess three main early, like, things I had. Another thing that I have, that just like, more of a general, like, county code policy that, I mean, I don't know very much about the policy being changed, or how that process actually works. But in my opinion, and in my view, and I think probably several citizens share this view with me, the current policy does not reflect the needs of the area. And what I mean by that is, the policy allows for so much density for these new developments, and it's just overwhelming for the area for, not just traffic reasons, but also medical facility reasons. And I've talked to a number of doctors who, and my girlfriend's a nurse at BB, and she basically tells me, the doctors tell me that, the hospitals are overwhelmed all the time and understaffed, and people are moving to this area with, you know, generally older people, or people who are about to retire. They need healthcare, they need to be able to be seen quickly, and, you know, have attention from doctors. And they're just not getting that. People come to this area, they have no idea that, you know, our hospitals are, you know, at 110% capacity all the time. BB, as an example, has 216 beds. 196 of those are general patient beds, 20 of those are ICU units. Their hospitals are so full that, on any given day, my girlfriend tells me that there's overflow into these ICU beds, and so now you're maybe, instead of 20, you're left with, you know, 16, or something like that. And it's just, I don't think anyone in the county council has really considered that, like, you know, we're building, we're building and building, and there's just no, it's not sustainable. And the, the health of our citizens is being impacted, because people can't be seen timely. And, you know, some of my friends' parents, who are doctors, tell me that. They used to see people, if someone came in with a medical concern, they would come in, and they would say, "Okay, we'll set you up an appointment for two or three months from now, and we'll come back for another check-in." Now, you can't even get an appointment for six to nine months, and a follow-up appointment is nine months to a year. It's insane. And I mean, that's for the specialists, and it's just, it's, no one's thinking about this. It's just, it's a lot.
We're thinking about it.
Well, I hope people are thinking about it.
I will tell you that we are, we are not a, we don't make the laws, we're only allowed to use the laws we have, the ordinances that we have, so...
I mean, I, I don't know the process of changing the laws, but maybe it should be considered by lawmakers or political people, which I'm not, I'm a computer programmer. I don't know anything about it.
Well, you mean, I mean, your observations are, well, I mean, we have serious problems, and we need to get our arms around it. So that, you know, thanks, and we appreciate your concerns.
Thank you.
They need to be taken seriously.
Thank you. I hope so. I believe that was the majority of my things. I wrote 29 pages of notes on this, including screenshots. So, yeah, I just, the density is a huge problem, and I wish that there was a way to make it so there would be, instead of 131 houses or 127 houses on, what did we say, 60, anywhere from 28 acres, if they do no deforestation, to 66 acres. I mean, it's just way too much. Yeah. Sorry, I'm definitely forgetting some of the things I wanted to say. Those were the main points. Oh, one more note I did have, though, was, there was a, and just a sort of question from the report. There was a Strategies for State Policies and Spending. They say, "The project is located in investment levels two, three, and four, according to 2020 Strategies for State Policy and Spending Act," whatever. The end of that paragraph says, "State investments will support growth in levels two and three areas, but request that developers remove any development planned for the level four area, remove any development." And the response to this message was, and I don't know what, there was no clear map to me that specified this is level two, this is level three, this is level four. So I couldn't really get a visual breakdown of what area they're asking to not be built upon. But the response to that was, "Increased wetland setbacks, voluntary buffers, and preserved forest will limit the impact to level four areas." Limit does not sound like not building to me. That sounds like still, some building's going on. And so, I mean, you know, people submit all these plans for all these big projects, and make all these promises, and as is proved by the Tower Hill, I mean, the property, like, that's a disaster. Like, I drive past there, and it's just, it's a mess, like, so much deforestation, it's, you know, it's not a protractor to look at, it's killing wildlife, displacing wildlife. And I mean, I don't want that to happen again next door.
All right, sir.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Ken, just before, with your notes, you talked about a lot of different pictures. Is that in a format that we can have for the record, or if you want...
I can email you a copy of what I...
Or if you want to just give Mr. Whitehouse the...
You can have this paper, I don't care.
Yeah, actually, why don't we just do that, just so, just because you referred to a lot of things, that way we know it's in the record.
Yeah, I mean, it might not all be, like, readable.
That's fine.
It's very rough draft, I put my notes, but it might be, something might be a little cynical.
The main thing is just the drawing you referred to.
Thank you. Dr. Otter, would you kindly come up and identify the items in this photograph, please?
What he's referring to is what we call a flake. To make a projectile point, you take a rock and you start breaking flakes off of it. They tend to be thin, they have one side, after you get into it, they have one side that's perfectly flat, and the other side is where you have facets where other flakes have come off of it. This is a small piece, 10 centimeters is roughly three inches, so this piece is maybe an inch long. It's flat on one side, you really can't tell that from the photo, so it has a semblance of resembling a point, because it's got some wasting on one end of it, but it's not, it's not a point, it's just a flake.
It was probably, was it by chance part? If you have a flake, it's because they were making a point somewhere else?
Yes.
We just don't have the point?
No, we didn't find any on that site.
Okay, thank you.
We didn't even find a lot of flakes, quite frankly.
All right, thank you. Okay, anyone else like to speak? Going once, twice. Now, when I go to the electronic folks, that means you guys are done. So if somebody gets a good idea later, it's too late. So now, if anybody wants to speak, let's do it now. Or, yes, ma'am, come on. Boy, you just made it.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Ashcraft, and it's actually from the last meeting, I believe. I was not here, but I was concerned, it was the plantation road, that's right behind me, and building low-end home housing. Do we not want to talk about that now?
Yeah, this, this public hearing is for this particular project, and if you missed last week's meeting, unfortunately, you missed it, because that record's been closed.
Okay, even though the email I had was not going, you know, we could submit our answers or questions, and I know, I think it was three to two, as far as whether to build those homes.
Okay, yeah.
Can't do anything about it, because that, actually, I finally got ahold of somebody, and they said, "Send it to this email," it went. So I'm wondering how many people were trying to get through, but the vote was on.
Well, we have to follow the rules of procedure in the Delaware Freedom of Information Act laws, so, since that was an application that's not advertised on tonight's agenda, that is not the subject of this hearing, we can't, as much as we might want to get those answers to you, we can't right now, but it's maybe worth a question to staff in the morning.
Call the office in the morning.
Okay. Just one more quick thing, as far as, um, should go.
Ma'am, if it's not about this application, we can't...
Okay, I think it was supposed to be, okay. I think it was supposed to be, okay.
Well, we have a bunch of different hearings. The one you're talking about is coming up, so just sit tight, you're going to get a chance.
You're going to get a chance.